Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session in the Eileen, Donidero-Foley City Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order at this time. This evening's presentations will be from the Fire Department and from the police. And at this time, I'll recognize the City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Basically, what we have is the two presentations starting our work session this evening. The Fire Department is first. It appears that there is going to be a presentation, but there is. The actual page number for the budget is, for the Fire Department, is page 160, 158 to 160 or thereabouts, so people want to refer to that as well. So I would turn it over to the Fire Chief to start the presentation and the Fire Commissioners.
Just for Councilor's edification too, while the Chief gets ready. Typically, you know, we go an hour apiece on these. That does not mean that we cannot go longer. We certainly can, or shorter, that might happen. And, you know, the idea is, the presentations are very beneficial, but we look forward to the questioning time. So with that, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the Council. Thanks for having us tonight. Just wanted to go over a overview of our department to make sure the Council had all the information of what the mission of the Fire Department and what we do. Serve the community with fire protection, emergency medical services, fire prevention, hazardous materials response and rescue services. Over 5,000 emergency community service requests annually, and those include fire and life safety, emergency medical services, special rescue emergencies, whether it be marine emergencies or technical rescues, environmental response, again hazmat, brush fires, hazardous materials and chemical emergencies, in conjunction with our regional hazardous materials team, personnel resources. There's 42 firefighters, 12 fire officers and three chief officers, one fire inspector, one executive assistant and one part-time account clerk. We serve the city out of three stations. Our Court Street Station, which houses administrative offices, prevention office, engine and ambulance one, our force unit, command support units, the training center, vehicle support services and our firearm division. Lafayette Road Station seemed to be replaced, houses ladder two, reserve ambulance and tower five. The reserve ambulance has been relocated to make room for the larger apparatus. The International Drive Station, or Station Three out at P's, engine and ambulance three, rescue three, the hazardous material support unit trailer that you see sitting outside, and another reserve engine. Our fire boat that was Homeland Security funded is now located at the new pier. The Port Authority put in for emergency services, and is staffed as needed by Station One companies. Do an awful lot of amount of training, both on duty and off, emergency medical care, fire ground operations, constant review of our basics, special rescue situations. We have the equipment for specialized rescue, and it needs to be trained and practiced. And we strive for professional development and career development. We're also involved in emergency management. As the Fire Chief, I serve as the Emergency Management Coordinator under the City Manager. We are part of the 10-mile emergency planning zone for Seabrook Station. We do have an updated city emergency operations plan and a hazard mitigation plan that are emergency support function-based. And that's just one of the drills that we did. State regional involvement, we talked about national accreditation. Our chief officers are now credited. I serve as the President of the Seacoast Chiefs Fire Officers Association, which is about 50 towns from West Newbury Mass. all the way to Somersworth out to 125. I'm Director of the Regional Hazardous Materials Team. I'm on the Governor's Council for Security and Preparedness and on the Grants Review Committee, Senior Staff Instructor in the Hampshire Fire Academy and active in the Hampshire Association of Fire Chiefs. And our staff is awful involved as well. Having just a brief overview of the department, I did give you a handout that's in color that shows the proposed fiscal year '09 budget with an increase of 5.51%. If you look at the last page of your handout, if the Council is wondering where earlier numbers came from, the Fire Department staffed at 1313, which again is a reduction from the 14 firefighter at night down to 13, represents the 5.5. 1314, the way we are currently funded, per Council direction is that would be an 8.7% increase. And just to point a reference, 1414 covering man-to-man coverage day and night is 11% increase. I prefaced that by saying that in previous years, I've advised the Council that the Fire Department is understaffed. If we followed National Fire Protection Association standards, we'd need 18 firefighters per shift. I realize the budget constraints, we could never do that. But proper staffing, as we do during storm coverage or other emergencies, is 15 personnel per shift, which puts five people in each station. That still only puts three people on first two fire apparatus in that district when it should be four. So we're not at 15, we're no longer at 14. This budget represents dropping further to 13. So just have the Council keep that in mind as we go through the budget numbers. Any questions?
Well, I just, I also, I was remiss in not welcoming the Fire Commission as well, Thank you for the presentation, and I'll open it up at this time, and if people have questions and comments that they wish to make, they're most welcome. Counselor Kennedy.
Can you explain clothing allowance, clothing and protective clothing in three category lines? What, I guess I was kind of confused at, first of all, why isn't it all in one category line or one line, and what each thing might represent?
Clothing allowance is uniforms, protective clothing is the structural gear that they wear fighting various types of fires.
Counselor Dwyer.
Just sort of an orientation, as we ask questions, is there a particular one version of these budgets you want us to be looking at, just for reference?
How about if we look at page one?
The budget that you have in your hand in color is the 1313 budget. It's a 5.51% increase.
So that's the one that would be helpful for reference.
And is that the same? Let's just make sure.
Yeah.
As compared to page? Sixty-five, you can have the line items specifically. 163 gives you the list of all firefighters, you know, so you might want to go to the actual budget itself to go through. So the actual budget starts the Fire Department on page 158 with the Table of Organization, and then as, and on page 159, it has a budget summary of expenditures. And then you'll see that it has various goals and objectives for the department along with performance measures. Then it lists all the department employees, and so I...
But I just want to, the one on 159...
Let me put it this way. What's in the budget book is what the City Manager is proposing.
All right, but that's not the, that's not this one. It is...
I think that...
It is for 1313.
It is illustrative to show the difference, I believe, Chief, isn't it?
Correct. Request '09 in the green column on the right.
Yeah.
We want to do to be aware of what we, what the proposals were, and the City Manager has presented the budget that most represents what we would like to have, and it's where you were. We need to be where we were to do that, to show you where that is. We've done everything we possibly can to cut back on that. We would like to stay at the 14 and 14 fire apparatus, if that's something that we can do.
Before we start the values discussion, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing and that the numbers that I'm looking at, I... It looks like it's page three and four that connect to, yeah, that's, I just want to make sure, that it's pages three and four of this, not one and two that are the City Manager's...
Your Honor, could we have a little clarification? We shouldn't spend, let's get a straight note.
My recommendation for the City Council, if you want, if the Chief and the Commission want to refer you back to this, my suggestion for the City Council, as we go through these budgets, there'll be a lot of handouts people are going to give you. My suggestion is you go directly to the budget, which is the proposed budget for fiscal year '09. And you have, and I would suggest that you work off the pages that are there, starting around page 160. Actually, 159 gives a good summary of the budget. Gives a table of organization on page 158. Talks about performance measures. On page 163, it lists every single employee in the department by name and department position. Then you get into page 165 that lists every expenditure by line item that's being proposed.
Counselor Dwyer?
I don't know where I am.
We're good, okay. The compass is set.
I want to pick up, Chief Leclair, one of the last things you said, just to give background. The national standard that you use of 15 per shift, does that have anything to do with population, or is that a figure that is related to shifts? Because it's one of the things, as we know, the fact that we have a ton of our size that we configure differently might not have three stations, it might have fewer than that. And I'm curious about whether that standard is related to the size of community population or the geographic spread, or if it's a standard that just applies to like a shift.
Well, the National Fire Protection Association standard, and it's 1710, it's very in-depth, but basically what it's asking for is four personnel per large apparatus.
Per apparatus?
Per apparatus. If you look at the way we're set up right now, and I'll just give you Station Two because that's what's affected in the budget. Station Two right now is a company that goes out on a ladder truck, and it's a ladder truck and a fire truck combination piece. It goes out to Service District Two. It will go out today, tonight, and throughout this budget if approved, with three people on it. There's the driver, there's the officer, and one person to help. That's it. There should be two people, because the driver has to operate the piece, put up the aerial, run the pump, do those kinds of things. That leaves two guys to go into the burning building or to effect that rescue, and it's simply not enough. National standards have shown that four is best. Some departments have even gone to five or six, but four is to fill the seats on the truck so that all the functions can be met. There's also standards to talk about how many people should be on a fire ground prior to interior fire attack. There's also a part of that rule called two in, two out. So if you have two firefighters in an ideal atmosphere, which means oxygen deficient atmosphere, there should be two people outside, ready and equipped to go in to get them. Not to rescue the occupants, but just to be there to rescue those firefighters should they get in trouble. It's a safe way to operate. At 14 people on a shift, that gives us four people at Station Two. At least at one station in the city, we're meeting that standard. With reduction in budget, we will not meet the standard at any of the stations. Regardless of national standards, as the Fire Chief, I can tell you it is the safe way to operate. Right now, we're kind of in the middle. We're staffing our fire trucks at three, and we will not go to two. It's unsafe, and if there are only two people left at the truck, it will not leave the building. And I just want the Council to understand that. So we are staffed now with, there's the primary engine in District Three and an ambulance. There's three people on the engine, two people on the ambulance. District One is exactly the same, and District Two doesn't have enough people to man the reserve ambulance. There's only three or four out there. It's simply a matter of there, there is no way to go to do it with less personnel and cover the districts. The other important thing we have, yes, other communities may have less stations, but the way we're set up and the travel time between districts, as you know, there is no easy way to go from District Three to District Two. Your survivability rate with critical medical calls decreases as your response time increases, and your ability to save property and save lives diminishes with how far you are out from the incident. In Portsmouth, if you look at the city and you split it up into three equal parts, we're very fortunate to have a Fire Department in the center of each one of those, a fire station that keeps our response times very, very low.
Counselor Dwyer.
That, that's helpful, and the per apparatus is a helpful thing to remember. Given that, I don't think anybody is, you know, talking about reductions below what you, you have talked about in terms of numbers of people, and I realize that in some ways that are, you all pose our largest challenge for budget reduction because of the sort of fixed number of people in the relationship. And so then the only way to think about it is different ways of thinking about people over time and levels of people. And that would, that's one question I had asked that all departments respond to, which is how, over time, each department has thought about reorganization, which isn't, isn't just about numbers, because, you know, I'll accept what you've just said about numbers, but in terms of levels of seniority, levels of people, also what you're projecting for retirement, so how the overall pool might be changing over time, how overtime plays into that. And I know that's, I know there's some limited things that you can say about that because that's part of contract negotiations, but whether, as the police have talked about, how they've thought about changes in levels of people that they need over time, if there's any thinking that you all have done about that kind of reorganization. One thing I want to bring up tonight for everyone, and I'll bring it up with the school as well, is the opportunity to consolidate our accounting and finances across departments. I realize that would not have much of an impact on the Fire Department, but, you know, that's just to talk to some of those kinds of ways of thinking about the overall personnel cost, not just the numbers of people.
Well, yeah, let's see if I can address that. We try to maintain a very lean operation. Right now, our civilian employees are one and a half. It's, that's all the payroll and, you know, office support that we have, is the executive assistant and one part-time account clerk. The Fire Prevention Division, as you know through last year's budget, finally went back to the level it was in 2000 with two people in it. They're very, very busy with the workload that we have. The Assistant Fire Chief to my left, Steve Achilles, in charge of operations and training. And below that is 14 personnel on a shift, 14 names assigned to that shift, and each station has an officer. The captain is downtown, he's responsible for the shift. And each station has a lieutenant. I don't know where we can go from there. I think we're, as far as reducing those ranks, I don't think it's possible.
And talk a little bit more about that, because I think that's the kind of thing that might be helpful for people to understand, because, you know, the ranks bring the increases and all of that, so...
There's a tremendous amount of responsibility goes along with being an officer in the Fire Department. And actually, as Fire Departments go in promotion levels, there's one big jump for a firefighter in his career, and that's from firefighter to lieutenant. That's when the world changes. Everything's incremental from there, but that's a huge jump. Actually, we just finished up our second half of Lieutenant's Exam today, established a list for the upcoming year. Those people are responsible for what happens at that station and what happens to calls in their district. And they could be the one that's in charge of that fire for five, 10 minutes before the captain gets there, before either of us get there or Deputy Griswold. So they have responsibilities they have to meet. They also have advanced education they have to meet, and they're responsible for those people. The captain is responsible for all three stations in the shift. A large incident, a multiple injury, motor vehicle accident, large rescues, things of that nature, especially a structural fire, all three stations will go to that district, and eventually the captain's in charge of it until the Assistant Chief shows up. And then I may, or may, on my arrival, may take command of it or not, depending on how it's going. I certainly have a staff that's more than capable of doing that. But tremendous amount of responsibility goes with that, and that's, that's why those officers are in place.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy.
Can you explain what, I'm assuming it's overtime education is?
What we did with our overtime accounts is, our overtime accounts really don't break down all the levels of overtime or what that overtime can be paid for. One of the things we did in the last budget cycle was to break out overtime that was used just for training, to take it out of recall, emergency recall, so that you could have a better accounting of what's being budgeted and spent for overtime for training classes.
I have a question, Chief. What, do you have a follow-up? Go ahead.
I guess, I'm perplexed, I mean, it's $35,000 for overtime for training, and I guess I'm kind of confused of how that makes up, like when, how do you do your training? I mean, do you, do they have to go off-site far away, or is it mostly here? You bring someone in?
Well, we do a lot of training on shift that costs us no overtime, and, but for advanced classes such as the Hampshire Fire Academy, Company Officer School, that we just sent some of our people through as part of their career development, which is an extensive three or four-week program where they have research projects, and it goes on for a couple of months, to cover those shifts while they're away at school, at school that we want to send them to, such as paramedic school, sending people off to paramedic school, which we haven't been able to do because of budget constraints, hoping to this year. And that covers the coverage, the bills associated with overtime coverage for sending them off-site to school.
So another, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Another follow-up to that is, you look at all the overtime here, and you add it up, and you look at a new firefighter. Well, what happened if we just hired a new firefighter to cover some of this, out of curiosity? In other words, you had someone like...
Additional, you mean?
Additional, like in a public school, we have people that we just hire full-time to be, just filling for teachers. We hire one person, so that, you know, so that, what would happen there?
Well, as part of the overtime study that was done a couple of years ago, one of the things that was, was talked about was hiring more firefighters to replace the firefighters who are on vacation. But you have to understand with that, that, you know, let's say you hired four single people. Eventually, they get vacation. Eventually, they get their health care. Eventually, they get married and have kids, and there's more health care coverage. So there really isn't a large cost savings when you figure out how much it's going to cost. You got to figure four firefighters, and if I could get it through you, past you, I would. I'd love to have four more firefighters. It's about $280,000 wages and benefits. And remember, that, that will increase the longer that they're here. So you really won't see a large savings in floating firefighters. You have to remember that there are 12 officers, you certainly wouldn't have a floating officer. So again, that counts for a large part of the overtime as well. So in looking at our budget and looking at hiring firefighters strictly to cover vacations, it's not cost-effective.
Even if you hire, and I'm going to take it a little farther if that's all right. Even if you hire, like, I mean, I'm just looking at 35,000 here, and the lowest firefighter is 36,000 for education purposes. I mean, do people go all off together to the fire school, or can you work it so one person goes off? I mean, I just, I'm just curious if that would...
Actually, we only have, the training is asked for unless it's something that we want to send them to. We have a very limited training budget for 61 or 62 full-time people. It's extremely low. We're constantly limited by what we can do. We're not able to send them off to, as I, we'd like to send them off in groups as a shift to go train together in the Flash Over Simulator and the Live Fire Props at the Fire Academy. We can't afford to do that with the budget that we have. So sometimes we send them off to specialty schools, things that we want them to know, things to advance their career, to make them more promotable, to make them a bigger asset to the city. And we never get the opportunity to send large numbers of people off. We do send a group of four or five down to the Shipboard Firefighting School in Virginia to get them ready for their responsibilities on the port, and that's been well received.
Chief, go ahead. Counselor Kennedy.
No, 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 thank you.
All right, just two questions, and I've seen no hands raised, and then we'll keep going. But I'm going to ask, because I'm just dying to, and it's about overtime as well. We go from on OT annual leave coverage, 390, to 537, and then look at the actuals going back in time. What's the rationale for that?
Well, when we formulate the budget, especially on the areas of overtime, and not knowing, understand one thing, if everybody took all the vacation time they're entitled to, we could never budget for it. So we look at what we spent averages over the years. Every time that we come to the City Council for a budget, and we're at 6%, you want 4%, there's only one place I can take it from. So over the years, we balance on the back of overtime. This year represents 1313. But because I can't go below 13, I want to make sure I have enough overtime money in there to make sure I'm not going to 12. Because that's how we balance the budget when we get to the last quarter of the year. This year, it was the last half. It seems every year we do it earlier, we're knocking off people off the night shift to make sure we don't overspend the budget. So this is merely an accounting measure, a housekeeping measure, to make sure that there's enough overtime in that budget to make sure that on June 30th next year, there's 13 people on a shift day and night.
Okay. I'll reserve any questions for now. Assistant Mayor.
Yes, Chief. The going down to 1313 per shift affects primarily the overtime, I would assume. Is that where the savings comes in? Is it in overtime, because there'll be less overtime since you're filling one?
Yes, right now, there are 14 personnel assigned per shift. What this means is if, if one person goes out on sick or vacation, we won't fill that until two people are on, then we start filling. That's where the savings comes. That's where the savings come. It's a cost savings, but operationally, it's not, it's not an operational savings. It's a cost savings at, you know, at the expense of a safety issue.
Yeah. And is this, are these overtime figures and budgeted or requested, assuming that the vacant position is, is going to be filled, or is this assuming that you don't finish, fill the vacant position?
As far as the 14 firefighter...
In the budget, there's one firefighter that's vacant.
The 14th firefighter vacancy is not included in this budget.
Okay. So if you were to fill that, would that reduce the overtime eventually, or?
Who would fill it?
At any measurable amount?
No, it would increase. There are 14 people assigned per shift.
Right.
If someone is out during the day, per Council policy over the last few years we've been doing this, someone's out during the day, we did not fill it, but we did man-to-man coverage at night. Someone, whoever was out got replaced. To make sure that on the night shift, we had four people at Station Two. During, our rationale for it was, during the day, we could, we could stand to lose one out there because we had the chief officers on, most people are awake, you know, business is on, they're, they're up and about, and they're, they're in less danger of succumbing to the effects of fire. We didn't want to take those chances at night and have a station that was responding to structural fires, emergencies at night that only had three people in it. It's certainly not the best scenario for us, but trying to keep within somewhere near the Council's mandate, that's what was necessary to bring the budget in at a somewhat reasonable level.
Reducing this...
Taking that 14th firefighter a night. In other words, having a minimum staffing of 13 day and night.
Okay. Jack?
Mayor, I think there's a misunderstanding here, and I think I'm hearing it both from the Assistant Mayor and from Counselor Kennedy. Chief, would you explain, I think Counselor Kennedy wanted to know, and I think Jack wanted to know, could you hire one firefighter, put him in the station, and let him cover whatever happens, that absentee for that day? Would you explain our shifting policy to them? Why one firefighter, if you hired one gentleman, or lady?
All right.
And I think that's going to answer your question. I think it's a very basic answer.
Well, yeah, I mean, actually, I thought my question, I was trying to get simpler, because I know that you have so many shifts to cover. The more people you have available to cover them, the less likelihood that there would be someone requiring overtime.
But Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Kennedy thought if you hired a body, that that body could just show up at Station One every day and be that absentee's replacement. And he, if he could explain it a little bit better, I think that would clear it for both of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
If you hired personnel, you'd have to do increments of four. There are four shifts that rotate through the year. They work two days, two nights, four days off. So A Shift, B Shift, C Shift, D Shift, and that's how they rotate, seven days a week. So, and there's usually always a vacancy, at least one. You certainly couldn't have this person working all the time, because then their overtime would go through the roof. So if you're talking about hiring personnel, much like the report, the Matrix Report, you'd have to hire them in increments of four. If the Council wants to hire, you know, 18 firefighters, bring the shifts to 18, and we'll move in a man at 15, yeah, we could save a whole lot of overtime, but your wages and benefits are going to go through the roof.
Counselor Kennedy.
I guess what I'm perplexed at is, is that when I did a brief figure of all the overtime, and that doesn't include the holiday premium pay, you're at, we're only looking at, you know, roughly $10,000 different if you take your total officer budget, you add up your whole overtime. You could hire all your officers, and that would be the same amount, almost within 10,000 of the overtime amount.
Do you understand the question?
See what I'm saying? If I add up all the officers and their salaries and what they're getting, and you add up all your overtime, you're really roughly 10,000, and that doesn't even include the $129,649 for the holiday pay, you're within $10,000 of... You're within $10,000 of what it costs us, all your officers.
And, and what is the conclusion one would draw, what is the-
My question, I mean, that's a lot of money, and I think, and I find it, I mean, I find it's a lot of money for overtime, and it equals the same amount, so you have all these officers. See what I'm saying?
Does anyone, do you wanna care to take up staff?
No, 'cause I have no idea what number she's looking at.
Okay, if you add, add up all your figures under your overtime request, maybe 537, 32, 26, all, all that's, all that money, you add it up, and you look at it, and you look at it comparison to what you paid, what you're requesting for your officers amount, money for just your officers, if you look at the officers, I'm assuming these are-
No, okay, I, I get it now. You got, the firefighters' line of $2,841,000 at the top of the page, that's all floor personnel. Top of the page on 165, where it says firefighters.
Exactly.
That's $2,841,000.
Right, but then go to page 163, and under 163, it says total officers.
Yeah, I see what you're doing. Total overtime's, look, $775,000.
Right, and your officers are 777, so I mean, you have all these officers that you have in your system, that equals pretty much, so that's a lot of people, is what I'm saying, to equal the overtime. So you could have all this experience there all the time, basically, for the same amount you're requesting for overtime. See what I'm saying?
If we doubled it, though, there are 12 officers-
If you want to hire 24 officers, I'm gonna-
No, no, no.
I, I-
Does anyone care to-
Well, the thing is, I think probably a better way, another way, I see what Council Kennedy's getting at, there's a, you know, it's $775,000 in overtime that's being asked for this year, and officers equate $777,000, so, but I, I guess what the, the, the observation is, there's a lot of money being spent, and so, another way you could look at it is, on a per firefighter basis, what is overtime costing? So that might be another way to look at it as well, which is, I-
Because that doesn't even include the 129,649 that was the pay, so.
Well, is the holiday pay, is it, I presume it's a collectively bargained item, is it not?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dwyer.
Well, I mean, I think Council Kennedy is asking the kinds of questions that, that I asked when I first started to try to figure out your budget. And the Matrix Study helps, because the Matrix, well, the Matrix Study also shows that what happens over time is, if you were to hire folks, the, with retirement benefits, et cetera, stipends, the incremental cost is geometric. And so, it adds up very fast, and so, you know, the first year, it might look like a savings, but then what happens very quickly into this, and, you know, you've got people in here for 25 years, you, you rapidly increase the cost. So you, I think your, your, your observation is right for a couple of years, but then what happens is you've essentially put in a time bomb of costs that are gonna go up very rapidly. But that, but, that's because of the structural overtime, the way, the way overtime is structured in our contracts. And so, a question that I have related to that, not to get into contract negotiations-
Okay, Council Kennedy, you're done, do you have a question before we go to Council Dwyer?
Well, I guess we need to see the Matrix, I, I guess I need to see it.
Yes, I think that would be really helpful.
I mean, that's what, because I find it very perplexing that you have all these experience, so you're looking at your top people, and you have this many people in that category, and that's what they're at right now, and, and that's what the overtime figure is, and it's $10,000 difference. So I find it, that perplexing.
Your Honor, if I might just, before we go on-
City Manager?
I'm gonna provide, Council Kennedy, with a copy of the Matrix Study. Any other new council members want a copy of it? You have it already?
I'd like it.
Okay, Chief.
The overtime budget is for all positions, that's all floor personnel, that's all the officers, all the firefighters. All of that overtime is split amongst 56 people. So to compare it to 12 salaries is apples and oranges.
Chief, I get a figure of around 16,000 per employee for OT, is that a, does that number ring any bells?
Well, there really isn't any overtime assigned per person, because some people will work it-
I appreciate that it's not assigned, but if you did the math.
I don't know.
It's an average rate.
It's an average if you were to-
Yes.
Okay. City Manager, then Assistant Mayor. I, I guess the, the way to try to focus this from a policy perspective, because a lot of this is driven by collective bargaining. The real simple policy decision that, well, it isn't simple, but it's a policy decision that has to be made in order to reduce this budget, if you choose to, is to take the decision, if you wanna go, let's say, and I'm not suggesting this, but the way you would do this is that if you wanted to go and bring this down, you would take and go to 12 during, you would take down and make a policy decision that you were comfortable with having 12 during the day, and 13 at night, or whatever, I'm not suggesting that happens. But when you look at all the collective bargaining agreements that affect this budget, the only thing you can do, really, as a council, is make the decision that you wanna reduce the number on staff when people are either on vacation or out sick. I think that's really, to clarify how you really would reduce this budget, that's- I'm just gonna, council, the Assistant Mayor and Council, Council Dwyer, but I wanna make sure the Chief, do you agree with what he said, so that the, meaning, is that how one might cut? You don't agree that one should, but one-
That, it really is that simple.
Okay.
In order to reduce the budget down from 14, you know, to reduce it down, I took somebody off staff. If you wanna do it, that's what's gonna happen.
What you saw was, when the Chief originally, and the Commission originally came through, it was a 9% increase. When, when he and the Commission decided to come in with 13 on at night and 13 on the day, you saw how much that came down. And that's, that's really it, because until, if you adjust the overtime numbers and don't adjust your policy as to how many you want on nights and on during the days, you're really just kidding yourself in terms of, because you have collective bargaining agreements you have to follow. Okay, all right. I think I saw the Assistant Mayor, Council Dwyer, Councilor Rose Spear.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we jeopardize public safety, but just for clarification for my purposes, on page 159 under Budget Comments, you're proposing your budget with an increase of 5.51%. And that's reducing it to, reducing the stat, reducing the on-duty staff?
Yes, sir.
And this is the next paragraph, maintaining it at 14 and 14 would increase the budget by 8.72%.
No, that's maintaining it at 14, 13. In other words, putting that fourth person, making sure it's man-for-man coverage on the night shifts, is 8.72, and that's still leaving the day shift a minimum staffing of 13. And that, we actually, we're at 14 night shift per council directive from a few years back.
So the 5.5 is having it be 13, 13?
Correct.
And the gist of my question is, by reducing to 13, 13, how, how does that savings occur? I mean, what is it that we're saving? Is it, is it-
You're simply saving overtime, and it-
Okay, that was the gist of my-
As you pay overtime, you pay retirement and other benefits on the overtime. As you pay less, those accounts go less as well. So it's easy to say four firefighters is 280, you know, when you think about pay and benefits, but if you ask for reductions, you have to go back and figure the budget. That's why I gave you those, that last page in that printout, even though, sorry for the confusion, the last page to show you, what it equates to is the staffing changes, what the increases equate to, what that means to the budget.
So the 5.51% increase is reducing-
Night shift staffing.
Our current level of service.
Yes, that's right.
Requesting the 8.72% is maintaining our current level of service.
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Dwyer.
I have several questions, but only one is along this line, so let me ask that one now. And it's probably of the City Manager. And that is, knowing that overtime is part, the overtime, the, the way that overtime is structured is part of collective bargaining, but that changes in that have the potential, at least in this budget, to be significant.
Right, if, if, depending, not going into collective bargaining items, but there, there are ways to collectively bargain and change this, yes.
Right, and so, I guess my question, because we're in that process, you know, with salaries, you plugged in a number so that we could have that. Let's say that through collective bargaining, this ends up being able to be, the overtime line could be reduced by 100,000 or something like that. Would, what would our process be in that case? Would we revise our budget, amend our budget, because that potentially has an effect, or, you know, how would that work?
Well, what, what we have now is an existing collective bargain, let me just approach it in two ways. Existing collective bargaining agreements are expected to be in place probably on July 1st, and not gonna, you know, I don't know if we're gonna come to an agreement, but given that, that we, that we don't, you have the existing collective bargaining agreement in place. So if you have the existing collective bargaining agreement in place, and you have the 13 on at night and 13 on the day, then obviously, this budget needs to be in place, if that's what you want. Later on down the road, if there is some collective bargaining that, that takes place, and I'm not sure, and I really don't wanna, you know, go too far along that way, because I don't know where the Commission is with the Chief and the, and the, our labor negotiator, but if that happened, I think you'd probably see that show up at fiscal 10.
Okay, that's my question.
That's probably the, the most, you know, that would probably, because, you know, they collectively bargain this, I don't, you know, there could be a whole machination of things that could take place, like, you know, it may have to take effect on July 1, 2009, or it could, you know. So I don't know, and I don't really wanna get into that, but there are ways to collectively bargain it and, and deal with that issue.
Right.
So, but I would say you're, you're, it would affect probably the fiscal 10 budget. Council Dwyer, you might have some more questions, are you comfortable with me skipping to Councilor Spear?
Yes.
Then we'll skip back. Council Spear.
Yeah, I had a question on page 158, the chart with the organization. Is that showing A-shift, B-shift, C-shift, D-shift, and then it's showing five persons in Station One, and then four in two, and five in three?
Correct.
Is that right?
With the, with the reduction, that will be, Station Two will be lieutenant and two firefighters.
Okay, that's what, that was, that was, I was getting at, and with, again, just to clarify, with reduction, that is 13 normally staffed, or is it 14 normally staffed, but you don't replace them if one person leaves?
Correct, it's not layoffs, it's just not filling the shift should someone be out.
Should someone be off? How, what is the staffing, if everyone attends work, what is the staffing for those three stations, I guess?
Would be as you see it.
14? So the regular staffing is 14, it's just when people leave, goes to 13. And-
And with 56 floor personnel, someone's out every day.
Yeah, with Station, and do you pull them, which station do you, oh, you don't know which station to pull them from, is whatever one they're off, or do you pick a station that that one-
Well, Station One and Station Three have an engine and an ambulance. As you know, we, we have two-staffed ambulances. Station Two is just the bladder truck. They have a reserve ambulance, but it's not staffed. Now, should there be a large event in the city, they will dump the ladder truck and take the ambulance to be the third ambulance in, but normally, it's not staffed. Ambulance coverage for District Two comes from either Station Three or Station One. Those personnel that are in that station go out to the call to stabilize any other unit transports, so we can keep the fire protection in service in that district.
And if we were to go to 12 on any shift, on any shift, what kind of configuration would that look like?
If you went to 12, the, the ambulance at Station Three would stop running.
Okay. And finally, related to that, do you, I saw in your performance measures, you have response times reach zone, I guess? And do you have that by zone, by season, or by, by shift, by zone, by season, by shift? So are there particular, I don't know if it's completely randomly distributed or uniformly distributed throughout the year, but I'm wondering, are there certain times of year when it's slack, and certain times of day when it's seasons, when it's slack, or things like that? Or regions that seem to be slack?
Can you take that, Steve?
On the performance measures, these are based on calendar year calls for the district. And also, what we did, because we have policy not, not to respond apparatus with lights and sirens and everything as a safety measure, what you see is critical calls that are time-sensitive have performance measures tied to them. And there's no seasonal flux on our fires or our critical emergency calls. So that's why you won't see a block of time showing a peak or valley. These are critical calls that are time-sensitive. Right now, if there was a box alarm, just an alarm in this district downtown, the other two stations do not come with lights and sirens. It's a safety measure, we don't wanna put them at risk or the public at risk. And we don't want them to go extremely fast with undue regard. Critical calls, they are time-sensitive, and we would have vehicles go with lights and sirens, so those are better ones to measure time, because those types of calls are very time-sensitive. And they are, they are not based on the seasons.
Right, or, or is it, do they vary by time of day?
No, no, they're, and what you see on here too, and I, I hope this makes sense, is that, for example, if it says, first fire unit on scene in Districts One and Four, which is downtown, is seven minutes, that counts the 90 seconds it takes from them to go from their bed or doing work to getting on the truck. So realize, there's a turnout time built in this, which is realistic. I don't know if all of us could get out of the house in 90 seconds if we had to, to get on, on our way to work, but that builds that time in, so it looks like you say seven minutes downtown, but it actually counts a minute and a half to get onto the trucks and out the door. So we actually are, are within that, the travel time is very, very good, and that's what the Chief alluded to, is that stations, everybody in the city is equally covered. I mean, if you live next to the station, you're better, but there's no section of the city that is not equally covered as any other one. Everybody's within seven to eight minutes, equal coverage. So people in District Two are, the Maple Haven are as equally covered as people at Colonial Drive or Elwin Park or Downtown, which is a pretty amazing feat for a city that we, we don't have any resident that, or business that is at a disadvantage for coverage.
If there's a major emergency in the city, and especially structural fires would fall into that, I call the Commission and I call the City Manager. And if there's any specific time, your phone rings, it could be nine o'clock on Tuesday morning, it could be 10 o'clock Saturday night, it's just, when they happen, they happen. We don't have peak times.
Right, so there's really no way, there's no slack station that you could close, or, or at certain times of year, they just wouldn't, it doesn't work like that, so.
No.
Or bring them to 12, even that would impact the ambulance service and-
Correct.
Assistant Mayor.
How does reducing staff at any of the stations by one affect response time?
The-
I mean, I would assume it would.
Well, right now-
I'm coming from this, you know, that if you have fewer people getting the truck ready.
Let me explain to you what happens during storm coverage, just to give you an idea. When we have a, a major storm, we will go to 15 per shift, and we'll put five, five, and five in each station. And then that district covers their calls, so no matter what, 'cause right now, we have cross-district responses. So no matter what the call is, short of a structure fire, when they'll all go, that engine and that ambulance can operate as a company, as a unit, and contain their district. That's the ideal situation. Obviously, it should be six, if you go with standards, but what we're really shooting for, and I've managed this for a number of years, we're shooting for the five, five, and five. Every year we try, we get further back. But to give you an idea, we have five at Station One, five at Station Three, we don't have that in District Two, so other districts have to come and cover those calls in District Two. So rather than them getting an ambulance in four minutes, they're getting it in eight, nine, or 10, 'cause it's coming from somewhere else. Fortunately, there's a fire response to go and stabilize. We do have several back-to-back calls on EMS, the ambulances run constantly day and night, producing about half a million dollars a year in revenue. So as we start to trim off people, like right now, Station Three, if we had to go to 12, it's coming out of there, so rather than have three people on the engine and two on the ambulance, rather than go to two on the engine, which I won't do, the ambulance is gonna shut down. So ambulance one's gonna be really busy, we're gonna either miss calls or have delayed response calls, or start abusing me too late, which is all not acceptable. And lose revenue.
Council Dwyer.
I know we talked about this last year, the billables on the ambulance, and, you know, just sort of roughly looking at it, and, I mean, I know it fluctuates by year, obviously it does, just thinking about another 20% on the billables, and you'd have your 8.72%.
Well-
You know what I mean? So, and I, so talk about why, why it's so hard to increase the percentage of ambulance billables.
Well, that's, Chief, go ahead, this is Chief Achilles' charge of EMS to handle that one.
The chart you saw yesterday was that 83% of the ambulance calls we go on actually get transported, but you still have to go to all of them, so there's a portion that you can't bill for, and you cannot bill for non-transports. That's a Medicare rule, it's an insurance rule, you cannot bill for showing up and-
But, but this suggests allowable, so-
So what ends up happening is, and this is your crash course in this, most of the people that we provide service for don't have Blue Choice or Anthem Blue Shield. What they, we do is, most- they, we do is, most people in the city have wealth Medicaid or Medicare. Medicare says your, your billable is six hundred dollars. Medicare, you, the allowable's eighty percent of that amount.
Okay.
So you can only bill four hundred.
It's the reimbursement rate, that's just what you pay.
And there is a, based on the demographics of Portsmouth, there is a large percentage that use the ambulance service, and most of our patients are over fifty, and there's another portion that are unable to pay at all. So at, running around sixty-two percent, I would like to make this higher. We are taking steps to create a ambulance billing policy that if you get a bill, you have a couple options, and we're going to create a more robust collection policy. Those that have the ability to pay, we will go through a collection agency to assist them in paying. Those that can't legitimately pay, we will allow that.
Okay.
I don't see...
And what's reasonable to get that up to? What's your...
I would hope that we get to seventy percent. However, we have the same type of demographic, maybe not the same calls, as Nashua and Manchester because of our elderly housing, our low-income housing, and our shelters. And that's very similar to Manchester, Nashua, and I have talked to the head of their ambulance service, and they're running around sixty to sixty-five percent.
Okay, that's real helpful.
And that's the type of community we are, and we don't try to push that on to the people that can pay. We don't have higher rates.
Right.
Because if you raise your rates, you're not going to get any more money, and we figured that out. The higher you go, you're not going to get any more.
Right.
I, just, go ahead, follow up?
Well, no, not related.
Just to let you know that we do adjust those annually. Those get adjusted in accordance with the ordinance, they get adjusted annually. Just ask people, as we get closer towards seven thirty, it is by no means cast in stone, but think of the burning question one needs to ask, and we'll try to get round the horn one more time if we can. Counselor Dwyer?
Another, I know P's, the PDA did provide some support for, I believe, for training, toward the, toward training. Is that something that is likely to continue, PDA making some contribution toward our costs?
I thought that was a commitment.
Municipal services.
And that would go for shipboard firefighter training and that, and the like.
Okay.
Okay, I have a quick one. If you, if you cut a hundred thousand dollars from the overtime budget, do you have a sense, Chief, how many shifts you would have where you had to go below thirteen to stay at that number? In other words...
What's the cost of per shift? It's about maybe four hundred and fifty bucks.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a shift.
So you got your little wonder machine there at your rear.
Just curious.
So you did four fifty times three hundred and sixty-five, just for the, just to give you half the year, because there's two shifts per day.
Two hundred and twenty-two shifts.
Yeah. So most days...
Two hundred and twenty-two shifts using that number.
Yeah. So you'd probably have half the year that would be at twelve. And what I'm saying is, any time of the year at twelve is unacceptable. Thank you very much. We understand what we're hearing, counselors, and we'll, we'll have a lot to think about. Any further questions for the commissioners, for the chief, for his department?
So just to give you the perspective, if, if you had to fill a shift every day, you talk about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in overtime, basically.
Counselor Kennedy?
I just have one question. Under your diesel fuel, under your ashwale, you're higher than what you're requesting, and with the rates going up, what are your expectations for this coming year for diesel? So in other words, you've already, your ashwale's already higher than what you are requesting, and I'm assuming that it's going to even be higher because of what's happening to the diesel.
We're sensitive to fuel prices. We're also sensitive to sustainable practices and trying to conserve as much as we can. This is also a year when we got the fire boat and did tremendous amount of training and used a tremendous amount of fuel through that vessel. That training's been completed, and we don't expect to do that again. And again, all these lines equal the bottom line budget, and it just started to keep things in reason to try to meet some type of reasonable budget increase. You know, nothing gets as, increased as much as we'd like.
Thank you. Seeing no one with a hand up, do you have anything further, commissioners? Fire chief, we thank you for your presentation. We appreciate your hard work and what you've brought us this evening. We'll be deliberating and thinking about it. When we have our final work session, we may well ask you back for a question or two. Do you have, anyone have anything else to put forth before we move on to the police department? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work. Thanks for coming. Take a two-minute recess, and Howard out there in the, thank you. Two minutes, folks, we're off the air.
Thank you, I'd like to call the meeting back to order as we come back from recess. Welcome at this time, Chief of Police, Police Commissioners, Deputy Chief, Police Department Members, for your presentation. And once again, we'll look forward to hearing what it is you have to say and then get into the questioning. And we thank you for your hard work in advance. And with that, whoever's kicking it off, please go ahead.
I believe that's me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, professional staff. I thank you for the opportunity to meet with you here tonight to present to you the 2009 Police Department Budget. Before I go into my introduction, I would like to extend Commissioner Russo's apologies for not being here. He is in Portsmouth Hospital, he has injured his back, so he could not be with us tonight. After last night's public hearing, and the input that we got from the public, the Police Commission and the Administration understand the constraints that the City Council is operating under in these economic times. And we met with the Chief and the Administrative Staff and instructed them to prepare a budget for presentation to the Council tonight for discussion tonight that meets the Council's target of 3.5 percent. That is the budget that we will be discussing tonight, a 3.5 percent increase over the 2008 Budget. We have been able to include in this budget this Street Sweeper Program, which was, has been federally funded for the last 10 years, and we lost that grant. We have included funding in our budget request to keep that Street Sweeper Program going and alive. The focus of the program is narcotics, gambling, and prostitution, and the Chief will be addressing those lovely topics later in his presentation. The budget also includes funding for an 11th dispatcher. As the tenured councilors know, there was a study done, I think in 2001, it was prior to my coming on the commission, so I don't know the exact date, of the dispatch center, and the recommendation from that study was the dispatch center be staffed at the level of 14 dispatchers. We are presently at 10. We are requesting in this budget an 11th dispatcher. The reason we're doing this is for two purposes. One is public safety, and the other is economic. We are forcing our dispatchers into a situation of forced overtime, because we have to staff at a specific level. I don't know if any of you are familiar with what a dispatcher does, but it's an extremely stressful job, and when they're overworked, public safety can be put at jeopardy, and when they're overworked, it's overtime. So there's an economic impact as well as a functional impact and operational impact. We are able to accomplish this 3.5 percent budget request by the implementation of the reorganization plan that we presented to the Council last year. And that, it takes a little time for that reorganization to come into place, because we're doing it by attrition. We cut one captain last year, and we are cutting another captain this year. This will reduce the ranking officers from 19 to 17, and it will also reduce the total sworn officers on the force from 69 to 68. So we are losing one sworn officer position in this budget. We have also reduced the detective complement by one, and the final part of the reduction comes from cutting back training. We are not cutting back training to a level that would increase liability to the city, but we took a look at some of the training that was in our original request that was, we presented it at the public hearing, and we are reducing some of the training. We are also reducing the purchase of equipment. Primarily, we are not going to deploy tasers at the level that we had originally planned to deploy tasers, so we have saved $15,000 in that one line item alone. We're also cutting our requests for some of computers and other supportive materials for our IT department. Also, we have cut our overtime request. I can't compliment the Chief and the Deputy and the Administrative Captains enough for how they keep their finger on our overtime budget. We have seen tremendous economies in that. It's not a blank check to the officers, we monitor our overtime diligently, so we've cut some out of our overtime requests. These cuts that I've just mentioned, and the Chief will go into them in more detail, have allowed us to present to you a fiscally responsible budget that meets your target of 3.5 percent. Now here's the bad news. Forty-five percent of the Council is brand-new. So I have instructed the Chief to do a comprehensive presentation on the Police Department for the sake of the new councilors. If you get irritated at this presentation at all, it is entirely my fault. So I would like to introduce to you Chief Michael Magid.
Thank you, Chief.
We should be able to test out. We should be able to test out.
Can you hear me? I just want to make sure this thing's on. Thank you. Mayor Farini, City Councilor, City Manager, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about your Police Department. Before I begin, I want to take the opportunity, though, to thank my staff for all their help in putting the budget together, but I especially want to recognize two members of my staff who are here this evening, and that's Captain Bill Irving and Captain John Yuradi. Bill is retiring at the end of this week after 25 years of service, and Captain Yuradi is retiring next month after John, 21, 22 years with the Department. I can't thank them enough for their contribution to the Portsmouth Police Department and to our community, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. In 1987, the Portsmouth Police Department brought the community together, and with the support of the City Council and the Police Commission, we developed a strategic plan that launched a community-oriented policing model. This model of policing is community-focused, problem-oriented, and proactive, rather than reactive. It has yielded an environment that does not breed juvenile crime or conditions like gangs and neighborhood blight. Community-oriented policing is about developing and maintaining partnerships to prevent conditions that bring about crime and disorder. And toward that end, we work with the City Managers' Office, we work with the Legal Department, we work with the Health Department, planning, zoning, library, we work a lot with our schools, DPW, we work with the Fire Department, Traffic and Safety Committee, Portsmouth Housing, the hospital, Sexual Assault Support Services, Safe Place, Community Diversion, just to name a few of the partners that we work with. Portsmouth is a safe, vibrant, desirable community as a direct result of these cooperative efforts. But policing the city can be a challenge. The fact of the matter is that there's a certain element out there in our local community that doesn't hold the same values as those of us who get up and go to work every day and make our community safe and productive. Again, our number-one goal is to provide an environment in which crime and disorder do not flourish. Your Police Department has three divisions, the Bureau of Patrol Services, the Bureau of Investigative Services, and the Bureau of Administrative Services. Our Patrol Division is made up of 45 uniformed officers. They are the primary responders for all calls for service. They cover the city by breaking it up into seven, three-to-seven beats, depending on the time of day or the time of year. Our Department's philosophy is one of beat ownership, meaning officers are responsible for their beats on a personal level. They're responsible for neighborhood problems, parking issues, barking dogs, all the way up to investigating serious complaints. As you can see from this slide, we've handled over 38,000 police calls for service, we made 1,599 arrests, up 5 percent, we investigated 784 felonies, we've taken over 200 people into protective custody, up 12 percent from last year. Our drug and narcotics violations are up 7 percent, credit card fraud is up 51 percent, and impersonation, which includes identity theft, is up 26 percent. Now, New Hampshire doesn't provide a lot of state and county resources. Consequently, it falls upon the shoulders of local law enforcement to be prepared for major incidents. Crime scene processing, tactical response, major crimes, fatal accidents are all part and parcel of what we do. Right now, as I speak, our State Crime Lab has a two-year backlog for computer forensic investigations, and our cybercrimes are up 20 percent. To ensure Portsmouth citizens have timely investigations, we have trained our own computer forensic investigators. The Bureau of Investigative Services consists of several different divisions, General Investigations, Family Services, Special Investigations Unit, Internet Crimes Against Children, and our School Resource Officers. Your detectives participated in over 100 search warrants in 2007. These search warrants were for child pornography, aggravated felonious sexual assaults, drugs, gambling, unsolved homicides, and felony-level crimes like fraud, theft, burglary, and robbery. Above and beyond our regular duties, we're involved in many community service events, including National Night Out, Law Enforcement Torch Run, PAL Basketball, exploring and providing security surveys whereby our officers visit local businesses and nonprofits to advise them on ways to enhance their building's security. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that we host spaghetti dinners. Now that our senior housing is no longer exclusively for seniors only, there's a higher level of fear in the residents of these buildings. In fact, I just came from the spaghetti dinner, so I apologize for any stains I might have on my tie. Mayor, it was great to see you there, by the way. I'm proud to tell you that the Portsmouth Police Department Explorer Post received the 2007 Northeast Explorer Post of the Year Award. This is the first time a New Hampshire Post has won the award. Currently, we have 15 students participating in the Explorer Program, and I'm also pleased to announce that this month, we launched our first-ever Citizens Police Academy to give the public a better understanding of what police work is about and to build further partnerships with the community. This program is fully funded by Crime Stoppers. As I said, we work in partnership with a number of city agencies and committees, including Traffic and Safety, and we do that to identify dangerous intersections and problematic locations. And with these alliances and our own prevention efforts, I'm pleased to report that over the last five years, property damage accidents are down 22 percent, and personal injury accidents are down 23 percent. To give you some perspective of the challenges of speed in traffic enforcement in Portsmouth, in 2007, we had an average daily count of 24,000 cars traveling on Lafayette Road. That's an average daily count of 24,000 cars. Along with this traffic comes DWI enforcement. I'm pleased to report that it has been eight years since the last alcohol-related fatality in Portsmouth. Our leadership in developing a regional approach with other law enforcement agencies against drunk driving is an ongoing campaign that I believe is delivering results. Alcohol-related crashes are down 36 percent over the last two years. It is with great pride that I mention that several of our officers were the recipients of the 2007 Red Cross Heroes Award for their level-headedness in defusing two-suicide by-cops incidents. And last year, the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office asked our Internet Crimes Against Children detectives to lead a statewide task force into the trading of child sexual exploitation photos and movies. Thirteen adults were either arrested or indicted, and please make no mistake, this is not pornography. These are some of the most graphic, brutal, disturbing images that you could ever see. One involved the rape of an infant. We continue to be challenged by the influx of drugs, specifically heroin, into our city limits. I'm sure many of you heard about the local man who died after ingesting heroin at a party in a Portsmouth hotel room. Four people were arrested as a result of that party, but what is most disturbing is that several children, including two toddlers, were also present while the adults were drinking and using heroin. What started as a drug investigation quickly became a possible homicide investigation and a child neglect case, requiring additional resources from detectives, family services, and the Special Investigations Unit. Last year, three citizens died because of drug-related overdoses from opiates, methadone, and heroin. Some of these cases are still under investigation. We continue to face the challenge of cybercrime, with identity theft being the number-one form nationwide. More than 125 million personal records were compromised in the U.S. last year, and that's a six-fold increase over 2006. Another study estimates their losses from online phishing scams totaled $3.2 billion. Our own statistics reflect these national trends. Offenses such as identity theft, credit card fraud, cyber harassment, cyber stalking, and child pornography are up 20 percent over 2006, and we expect this trend to continue. We have one detective that is assigned to monitor 28 registered sex offenders living in Portsmouth. The research is very clear, the recidivism rate of sex offenders is high, and we are vigilant about keeping tabs on each and every one of them throughout the year. We take our monitoring them a step further by performing unannounced compliance checks as well. We were the first department in the state to make a felony-level arrest of a sex offender for failure to report when the law changed last year. In fact, in 2007, detectives made 10 arrests of sex offenders for failure to comply. And you may remember that last year, we highlighted the case of William Dolly, the individual in the upper-right-hand corner, a convicted sex offender who we arrested for kidnapping and attempted to sexually assault a young girl. I'm pleased to report that because of our investigation, this man pled guilty to five felony charges and will serve five to 12 years in New Hampshire State Prison. We will maintain our commitment to monitor these sexual predators to ensure that our children are safe. Underage drinking continues to be a grave concern nationwide. In New Hampshire, the results of the recent Youth at Risk Survey revealed 30 percent of Portsmouth High School students reported binge drinking within the last month; 48 percent reported drinking alcohol within the last month. Your Police Department expends a significant amount of energy in the areas of prevention and proactive intervention of alcohol use by children, because we know that the outcome of this behavior can be catastrophic. In 2007, we broke up 19 different underage drinking potties, arresting 100 young people for alcohol crimes. We arrested 26 other juveniles in separate alcohol-related incidents, including nine for DWI. Our School Resource Officers addressed this high-risk behavior through many different proactive activities, including chaperoning celebration graduation, the high school proms, conducting alcohol awareness classes, maintaining an alcohol tip line, conducting alcohol-drug recognition expert seminars for high school staff and parents, monitoring our hotels and motels to ensure that students are not renting rooms for underage parties, conducting bar checks with the New Hampshire Liquor Commission, sending out alcohol-warning letters to bars and restaurants, and conducting compliance checks. We continue to struggle to find ways to deal with the mentally ill and addicted who are chronically homeless, living on the street. The sad reality is that law enforcement and the criminal justice system have become the caretakers of last resort for this population, and that's not going to change anytime soon. We work on a daily basis with our social service agencies to try and address the underlying causes of chronic homelessness. We coordinate our efforts to provide help, treatment, and placement for them in shelters, but for some, this is a lifestyle of choice. Managing growth is not just about approving building permits and developing hotels and parking garages, it's about managing and maintaining the quality of life for all of our citizens and visitors. There's a direct correlation between quality of life and the level of fear and feelings of being safe that people have in their neighborhoods and in public and open spaces of our city. Portsmouth citizens have come to expect a safe city, and we'll continue to do everything we can to maintain that. And Portsmouth remains an event mecca. We host a diverse number of events all year round. Sometimes, there are as many as five events running at the same time in the city, which constrain our on-duty resources. In 2007, there were 194 special events in Portsmouth, not including plays or concerts in Prescott Park or the Music Hall. Pies continues to see extensive growth. Fifteen years after the base closure, the Trade Port has emerged as the number-one base realignment success story in the nation. Pies has nearly 7,000 employees from 225 different companies, and Pies is now host to a number of special events requiring our presence, including the Red Hook Summer Concert Series, the Wings of Hope Air Show, which incidentally drew over 200,000 spectators, road races, the Working Dog Foundation Open House, bike races, and the Portsmouth International Boat Show. We welcome this growth and revitalization, but we're also closely monitoring the increased demand on police services that all this growth generates. Professional law enforcement is more sophisticated, technical, and complicated than it was years ago. Police officers now arm themselves not just with a firearm and handcuffs, but with laptops, law books, and the skills, knowledge, and ability needed to make split-second decisions under less-than-ideal circumstances, and they do it each and every day. Police work is a high-liability profession. Officers must be trained in the latest laws, tactics, procedures, and skills in dealing with our diverse community. We've achieved our superior record and reputation by providing the officers with a variety of training. Since 2004, we've been struggling with staying current in our training without an increase in three years. We've been creative, but we've stretched the limits of our creativity. As you can see on this slide, well, I'm sorry, this slide is wrong, I didn't have time to change it, but the Police Commission is submitting a budget of 3.5 percent. A breakdown of the proposed fiscal year '09 increase to our budget is illustrated in this pie chart. As you can see, 36 percent of the increase is committed to contractual obligations and the loss of Street Sweeper money. 12 percent is for the 11th dispatcher. Other operating costs include items such as bulletproof vests, training, equipment, and increased costs in supplies and services. The overtime increase includes $22,000 for investigations, some of which was funded by the U.S. Attorney's Office Street Sweeper Program in the past, $10,000 for forensic computer examinations, and the remaining increase split between patrol, training, and hiring. I would like to expand further on two major areas of our increase. First, I'd like to discuss the amount attributable to the loss in funding from the U.S. Attorney's Office for Street Sweeper investigations. Portsmouth has been fortunate to receive $850,000 in federal funding since October of 1999 for staffing, overtime, and training costs specific to drug, gambling, and prostitution investigations. In the past, we relied heavily upon the Attorney General's Drug Task Force to conduct local narcotics investigations. However, it's not possible for the Drug Task Force to devote a large percentage of its time and resources to the city of Portsmouth. The task force is statewide. The team responsible for our area covers a jurisdiction that extends all over Rockingham and Stratford Counties. Consequently, they must prioritize cases and tend to focus on large-scale investigations. However, the area that is often overlooked, but in our opinion is equally important to devote resources to, are local street-level narcotics trafficking cases. We developed a street-level interdiction unit that targets specific individuals and locations for further investigation. We also engage in motor vehicle and highway interdiction activities, focusing upon the seizure of heroin and other drugs being transported between the city of Portsmouth and northern Massachusetts primarily. The unit devotes significant time and energy to the development of drug intelligence information. It also works to expand the number of informants knowledgeable in illegal narcotics activities by interacting with these individuals on a regular basis. And finally, they provide an education component as well. For example, methamphetamine is often cooked in motels and rental units. SIU detectives provide educational information on this drug and its manufacturer to hotel and motel operators, as well as landlords of rental units, so they are aware of the signs and can report any suspicious activity. Regardless of the funding source for this program, these investigations have to continue. Second, I'd like to highlight the increase we are seeking for the 11th public safety dispatcher. In 2001, our Emergency Communications Center was evaluated by the consulting firm PS Comm. While we have already implemented many of the recommendations in their final report, we have neglected one of their biggest, and perhaps most important, which addresses staffing. Several of the new Council members may not be familiar with the study. It concluded that our center was understaffed and our dispatchers were experiencing burnout. The report recommended the hire of one additional dispatcher per shift plus one over hire, and that was seven years ago. It is now 2008, and we've made no progress on implementing what is probably the most important recommendation in this study. The additional staffing needs have never been more evident than in the last two years. The center has experienced multiple periods of severe shortages in staff due to injury, sickness, FMLA leave, and a lack of qualified candidates to fill vacancies. As the PS Comm study recommended, hiring a third position each shift would ensure that there are no gaps in staffing when vacancies occur. There would be adequate coverage during periods of predictable high volume, and dispatchers would avoid critical errors during periods of high stress. The dedicated men and women in the center have consistently worked 12-hour shifts and some 16-hour shifts to ensure that police and fire posts are covered. In fact, last year, there were nearly 400 extended or forced overtime shifts. I can quote the study on this slide and summarize a few pertinent statistics, but what I can't show on this slide are the actual dispatchers. I can't show how many shifts they volunteer to cover when we're down one or two dispatches, or when they put their personal lives on hold, missing out on their kids' plays, basketball games, and family outings. Nor can I show them trying to eat their lunch or dinner at their console, because we only have two dispatches per shift, and neither one can leave their post for more than a few minutes, nor how tired they get without a break. An 11th dispatcher will allow for much-needed coverage during peak activity, shifts, breaks, leave coverage, and improve the quality of life for all who work in the center. They'll also give us the trained person we need in the event we have a resignation, rather than covering these vacancies with mandatory overtime. I ask that you concur with the PS Comm study from 2001 and fund the additional dispatcher we have proposed in our fiscal year '09 budget. Although it doesn't fully implement the staffing recommendations outlined in the study, it's a big step in the right direction and is long overdue. Returning to our overall budget illustrated by this pie chart, 87 percent of our budget is consumed by salaries and benefits, 7 percent for other operating, and 6 percent for overtime. And although our overtime comprises only 6 percent of our expenditures, it is historically the most scrutinized portion of our budget, so I'd like to address this subject head-on. The reality is, public safety cannot operate 24/7, 365 days a year, without overtime. The Matrix Overtime Audit commissioned by the Council during 2006 revealed many of the proactive management practices the Police Department already utilizes to control overtime. Matrix stated, "Overtime expenditures per employee in the Portsmouth Police Department, one of the highest overtime generators in most communities, are 30 percent lower than the median of the agencies surveyed." You specifically asked about staffing. We review our staffing annually. As you can see from this slide, from fiscal year '01 to fiscal year '05, we made a number of staffing changes that realized the savings of approximately $138,000. Last year, we reduced our ranking officers from 19 to 17 and a limited police officer position going from 69 sworn officers to 68. And I want to correct the misconception that we are constantly coming back to the city to supplant federally-funded positions. To give you some historical perspective, in 1988, the city had 63 budgeted police officers. In 2008, we had 65 budgeted police officers, a net gain of two positions. In 1990, we had 20 ranking officers. Now we have 17. In 1988, we had nine events. In 2007, we had 194. From 1988 to 2008, the service population has increased dramatically in this city. Let me wrap up with some of our highlights and accomplishments. In the last five years, property damage accidents are down 22 percent, personal injury accidents are down 23 percent, alcohol-related accidents are down 36 percent, and it's been eight years... years since the last alcohol-related fatality. We took 138 impaired drivers off the road. We took 266 individuals into protective custody because they were so intoxicated they couldn't care for themselves. We arrested 10 sex offenders. We made 300 juvenile arrests. We served 1,950 legal documents. We handed up 167 felony indictments to the county attorney for prosecution. We conducted over 100 search warrants. We responded to 19 underage drinking parties and arrested 100 individuals as a result of those parties. We also arrested 26 others for separate underage alcohol-related offenses, including nine for DWI. We arrested 21 people for selling alcohol to minors. We closed down a local establishment for 14 days for gambling violations and another for 15 days due to injuries as a result of over-serving alcohol. To keep this city safe, we've done everything from installing car seats for new families to cooking spaghetti dinners for our seniors. As a police department, we are fiscally responsible. We utilize over 170 codes to track and manage our overtime. We analyze overtime by division and program, by shift and by type. We constantly compare historical and year-to-date trending and adjust manpower resources if possible. In terms of staffing, we've completed a major reorg in 1998, downgrading an entire tier of high-ranking officers. We've reduced our ranking officers from 20 to 17 and our overall police complement from 69 to 68. And when it comes to training, we extract a buck twenty out of every dollar, and that effort would become a training hub for the New England area, which has resulted in over 44 free training seats with a savings of $23,000 in tuition travel and overtime costs in 2007. We aggressively pursue grants, donations, and other funding sources because they are an invaluable component in achieving our policing goals. They help reduce our staffing costs, overtime, equipment, training, fleet repairs, supplies, and program costs. We have a million-dollar dispatch center, grant-funded, 100 digital radios for our officers, grant-funded, a $48,000 state-of-the-art emergency command vehicle, grant-funded, tens of thousands of dollars of technology equipment, all grant-funded, DWI checkpoints and saturation patrols, grant-funded, a recent $117,000 technology grant to enhance our software to exchange information with other departments, grant-funded. We continue to pursue these funds because the increased challenges, demands, and costs of policing our city exceed our allocated budget. It is difficult for someone like me who knows every nuance of this department to package it up into a 30-minute presentation. Let me conclude by saying we are fully cognizant of the challenges taxpayers face each and every year and have gone to great lengths to provide this city with the biggest return on the funding allocated to us. We are cognizant of the increasing challenges and demands facing our police officers today, especially in Portsmouth's unique tourist-rich environment. We believe this budget balances the needs of both the citizens and our department. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. Now, as we get reconfigured, we can begin with our questions, comments regarding that fine presentation. Any counselors ready to start off? Counsel Dwyer.
Just, are you going to give us a, I know you just did, Dave, are you giving us any paper that reflects the summary, Jerry, that you?
Of our cuts?
Yes.
I have not prepared.
Okay.
That's why we were coming in so late. We did the mandate not that long ago, and it was pretty much handwritten.
Okay.
Page 143 is in the budget is where the Police Department begins.
Maybe you would just, just because you would just give us the new bottom line.
Do you have that, Karen?
Probably approximately $40,000 reduction.
I was going to say, 43,159.
Okay.
43,159 is the reduction. That gets us to the 3.5 percent.
Questions, Counsel Dwyer, then Counsel Spear.
Let me, I have some questions of my own, but Counsel Smith asked me, because he could not be here tonight, I would ask some questions on his behalf, gave me two. So let me ask them and then let you respond. And I think, I know this is not the kind of question you can just answer off the top of your head, but you helped us to start answering it. He was interested in, with the sweep, the street sweeper monies, the approximate proportion of arrests that had been related to, that were attributable to a street sweeper. Okay, so he was kind of interested in, you know, what of our overall profile, statistical profile, what particularly did you attribute to those funds, if that's a possible thing? And then his second question, and you know, you may answer these in a related way, is what our relationship currently is to the Seacoast Task Force for Drugs and how that may be related to what we're going to be doing in the future to replace the street sweeper.
Chief, do you care to respond?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's fair, since Counsel Smith is not here, but.
Sure.
Noted for the record, Chief.
Commissioner Russo will respond.
While my staff tries to find the statistical information that you asked about, let me talk about the Drug Task Force. The Drug Task Force is run from the Attorney General's Office. It's a statewide narcotics investigation unit. It's made up of different teams. The Seacoast Team is the A Team and encompasses Rockingham County and Stratford County. They traditionally focus on higher-level drug dealers. We were involved with the AG's Drug Task Force for a lot of years, and although we had some success, we came to realize that it wasn't meeting our local need. And that was most of our problems that we were experiencing, had to do with local street-level drug dealing and drug users. Alls it takes is a couple of drug addicts out there to cause a crime epidemic. You know, your baby theft formulas that you read about in the paper all the time are mostly being done by people who are addicted to drugs. So we wanted more of a Portsmouth-oriented local focus with narcotics investigation, which is why we left the Drug Task Force and we went to our own local model. And Chief Russ was fortunate to get funding from the U.S. Attorney's Office to pay for one and a half, 1.2 individuals, and that was for eight or nine years now before the funding finally dried up.
And it paid for their overtime also.
So.
So I, you know, does that mean that we would then reconsider participation in a?
No. It would ultimately be the Commission's decision. I can say fairly confidently that it would be my recommendation, the staff's recommendation, that we don't go back to that model. It just didn't, it just didn't pay dividends for us. Somebody in Lowell and Lawrence getting arrested by the Drug Task Force or DEA ultimately just didn't, didn't help out what we were doing or what we wanted to do in the city. So it's not a model that I feel that, that works for us. I wouldn't want to, it would be a step backwards. The stats, we, SIU arrested 18 people for possession of drugs, including methamphetamine, cocaine, crack cocaine, 15 people for sale of drugs, three people arrested for prostitution, and they also conducted the gambling investigation that I talked about, plus there were four other felony arrests that they did. You know, I think one of the key benefits that they, that is very hard to quantify, is the intelligence information that they gather from the people that they deal with on the street. The kind of information that they get isn't, doesn't just have to do with drugs or narcotics. I mean, it helps to clear up burglaries and other thefts and robberies and you name it. I mean, it gives us a heads-up as to what's going on out there. So there's, there's other benefits as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Spear.
Yeah, the budget, whether it's the 4 percent or the 3.5 percent budget, does that include?
Well, I think they've indicated it's the 3.5 percent budget. So you're trying to find out what's?
Does it include a possible COLA increase? It doesn't.
No, the COLA is in the line item under the summary.
Right.
What's included there is stuff increases.
The stuff increases. So I don't know what it's going to be, but there will be some COLA increase, so the budget eventually would be higher than 3.5 percent.
Ultimately, yes.
Ultimately, it would be, right?
I think that that's common for all departments.
Right, right.
Well, let's make sure we're clear on that point. Well, overall, it wouldn't be for all departments. For example, municipals in at less than 3.5 percent.
No, I meant the COLA.
Right, the COLA would be distributed, but it would not increase the overall operating budget.
Right.
Because it's already included in as a line item in the summary.
Yeah, I think the point I was trying to make, Mr. Manager, was that the COLAs aren't in any of the department budgets.
Correct, correct.
And Eric? So if we want to do a get at or below 3.5 percent, including those future expenses, however they might be, we would want to get below that as well. One would assume. All right. The next question I have regarding the, the need for the dispatcher, which I thought was a good presentation about why, why we need one, an additional one. But, and this is kind of maybe the city manager or the commission can explain, the city council, we'd give them a pot of money, and it's really up to the commission in terms of how it spends the money, so we're not going to say we're appropriating this money for a dispatcher. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
I think we're, by doing the presentation on the?
Well, go ahead, Jerry.
On the dispatcher, we were showing why it's 3.5 percent.
Okay.
Because that 3.5 percent increase over 2008 includes the 11th dispatcher, as well as the street sweeper.
But just to be clear, the city council does have the right to establish staffing levels for police, and not to hire, but by charter, they establish the number of people in the organization.
That's correct, and the council has said, past councils have, have set the number for the Police Department at 72 sworn officers, but they have not funded.
I see. Okay.
Any questions at this time? Counsel Kennedy.
Um, yeah. I always feel when we're looking for money, we should go to revenue. And so my question is, is when looking at the revenue for you guys, I'm assuming that the police outside detail is revenue. You talked about the increased demand on your system from all these events taking place and all the activities and everything. And you have projected that you are going to receive $90,000. Your actual is 82, you're projecting again $90,000. If we're getting an increase, I guess my first question would be is, what percentage of this would be your overtime? Was what percentage of your overtime is going to be revenue generating? Do you know?
Let's try and clarify the question.
Okay.
Why don't we have the Finance Director speak to that?
And the outside detail revenue comes from when an officer works a detail, say, for Verizon or on the street. It is not related to the overtime budget that's in the Police Department budget itself. So the overtime that a police officer makes from outside detail is not in the Police Department's budget.
No, I realize that, but if we're getting, if we're having all these activities, one of the questions the other night was from the people standing at the podium saying that with all the activities, example they gave was the politicians visiting. And what you said, there's a lot of activities. So my question is, is are we billing for all the activities? And what percentage of these activities, maybe the question should be, what percentage of these activities can we actually receive revenue from or bring revenue into the city from all the time you guys are doing for these activities, like a road race? I know that we bill for that kind of thing.
Let me give you some historical background and maybe that will help define the question, I guess, so to speak. I've been involved in event planning and working with the different nonprofits out there that want to do the events for probably 12, 13 years now, and, you know, it's been a policy issue that's been at the council level for almost that time. And that is, how much coverage do we provide on duty? And at one point, very early on, nonprofits were concerned about how much it was costing them for police coverage, and the council actually allocated money in our budget to help defray the costs, because they wanted the events to go on and to take place. Eventually, that got cut from our budget. But the overall message that we received was the one that, you know, the city wants to work with these, with nonprofits with these events and try to reduce costs as much as possible, which is what we do. So if we have an event that's taking place and we can use some on-duty resources to help keep the costs down, we do that. More often than not, a lot of these events will hire police officers. They'll get a bill, and there's a surcharge on that bill that helps to fray some of the administrative costs, such as the time of, you know, clerical time involved in sending out the bill and, you know, licking the envelope, workers' compensation, liability insurance, and all that other stuff as well. And that money gets rolled over into an account that the Finance Director is probably better prepared to talk about than I am. But we don't ever generate revenue, I guess, so to speak, out of any of, any of that.
Do?
So where does that count? What count number is that in here?
It's the outside detail account. I'm sorry, detail account, I just, it's under local sources on page 59.
So it's the outside detail count?
It's the outside detail account.
So that's for police and administrative costs?
Yes.
Sorry, what page did you say that was?
59.
Page 59, in the front. Okay, but not in the police.
Other local sources.
All right, I see. As a revenue source.
I have some creative ideas if the council wants to allow me to generate revenue.
I suspect you do.
Is it presentable?
Do we, are we square on that question, or do you have further questions before we move on?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's something that we might want to start thinking about. If all these activities are going on and it's pulling from the resources of safety, then, you know, something that we might want to look at.
Is what you are, is the question you are trying to ask, should we ask nonprofits to pay more money for police services? Is that what we're talking about? Or? Well, I guess, you know, the Police Department and Fire Department included and Public Works all work to try to make the event happen with as least amount of impact to the nonprofit. There are benefits to having these events in the city. There are also, they can be, they can be, they can be a situation where if you have five in one day, they can be rather problematic. But the Police Department, like I said, and the Fire Department and Public Works, we, I will say that if it's a road race, they're hiring because there is a requirement. But if it's a walkathon, there's volunteers involved, and they typically are on the streets, I mean, in the sidewalks, and we don't, we don't really hire in and try to, I guess the Police Department is trying to use the existing shift.
That's right. For a walkathon, we typically will not make an agency hire a police officer, but we will make sure that the beat officer knows what's going on so that he and she can check and see and make sure everything's being conducted safely. In reference to road races, though, I want to say that we work with the nonprofit and we try to keep staffing down to a minimum. I could make the road races run a lot smoother and not get the phone calls the next day from people who get stuck in traffic for 20 minutes by putting a police officer at each and every intersection for a road race. But it would bankrupt the nonprofit. They wouldn't make any money.
Right, and, and the Police Department's been really good in working with us on, working with the nonprofits. And it is, it is, you know, a policy decision at some point, and this, and the chief is correct. About eight or nine years ago, the city council said, let's try to work closer with these nonprofits, because there were issues that people brought up and, but there are benefits to the events, and there, and like I said, we, what we've done now in your packet every council meeting, you see all the events that are happening, so we may at some time eventually have to recommend to some of these events that they choose another weekend. And so that's what we're trying to watch for now. We're trying to track that a lot close. We've set up a system of tracking and working with the Police and Fire Department, Public Works, so we are trying to do that.
Thank you. That's an important policy question. Counsel Kennedy, anything further for now?
At this moment.
All righty. Counsel Dwyer.
I just first want to thank the Commission and the chief for this long-term plan to look at reorganization of tasks and levels, because I think it is starting to pay off, something that got started last year. And so a first question is, I wondered what's, and also your really clear presentation of that, because that's something that we are interested in from the other departments. What's your long-term, what's next in that? Or is there a next? Have you had the chance to talk about what's next? I don't mean necessarily this year, but looking forward, are there some other kinds of changes that are feasible or have we kind of? Or have we kind of reached our limit on that?
Well, I think the plan, the reorganization plan that we put in place starting last year is starting to fall into place now with the retirements that are happening. And I think it's a good overall structure for the police department that should serve us well for the next five years. But, I mean, we're gonna, we'll look at it each and every year. Alcohol issues, as you heard me talk about, continue to be a source of a lot of what we do out there. And we have talked during staff meetings about perhaps assigning somebody to be a formal liaison and work with all the bar owners and, you know, quite frankly, enforcing liquor laws and the licensing and all that stuff has been the purview of the Liquor Commission. But we can and we have authority to get involved in that area. We've talked about perhaps, you know, educating a detective or a sergeant or somebody to learn about doing that because it's become so much of what we're doing out there. But overall, the reorganization that we put in place, I think, will suffice for the next five years. I mean, we've reduced the level of captains from six. Well, we had three commanders. We don't have any commanders anymore. We have one deputy chief. We reduced the captains from six captains to three captains. We reduced the captains on the line to lieutenants. You know, we've increased the, you know, we've kind of flattened out the organization by increasing the number of sergeants that we have. So, again, I think it's gonna work, so.
Counsel Dwyer.
I sort of have a question related to that, and I posed it with the fire, and I'm really gonna pose it when we get to the school department. And that is, you know, this goal of consolidating some services that we have within the city. And we've seen the school department and the rec department work together very successfully. We've seen some movement in facilities management. And it seems like the next natural area is finance and accounting. That, and, you know, we might not realize changes or savings in that immediately, but over time, as a city, we well might, if we were to look at budget and accounting in a consolidated way. And I don't know if you have any reaction to that. I'm not asking necessarily for it out of this year, but how to think about that over time. Or commissioners.
Anyone can respond.
Well, I think we have done some consolidation in the past. Fire department used to have a dispatch center. Police department had a dispatch center. We now have a dispatch center for-
Good example.
-fire, police, emergency services, and public works after hours. We're looking for places where we can economize.
We had a human resources coordinator. We downgraded that to a secretary and moved that over.
So that sounds like you're open to thinking about then, looking at that from accounting and finance as well.
That depends. I used to work for Judy Belanger, and I may very well retire before I do it again.
Okay, we just probably won't have any response to that. Counsel.
School resource officer is another example, wouldn't you say, where you share the responsibility with the school department?
Yes, that's a good point. We do share the cost of the school resource officer with the school department.
And I just had a question about the crossing guards. Now, that's all related to the schools, correct?
I, no, we provide that function.
And that, that's not shared with the school department then?
It is not, no. It is not shared with the school department. It's always been on the, since I've been here, it's always been a police department function. I suppose you're asking that because you're hearing from parents who want more school crossing guards?
Well, I mean, I have heard that, but that wasn't why I asked.
Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Spear or Counsel Kennedy? Which one do you got? There you go, Counsel Spear, then Counsel Kennedy.
I had a question about the, is there a detective that works on internet crimes and stuff like that? Right, and I had a question about that in terms, because the internet obviously isn't really a place or a geography. How is that detective serving the people of Portsmouth? Are there criminals in Portsmouth or the victims in Portsmouth? Or how does that work when you have the internet? Because it's just so ubiquitous. Could be anywhere.
Yeah, boy, I think that's a good question. I don't know. All right, let me turn. You know, when I was a detective in the mid-'80s, we used to investigate bad check cases. And, you know, we went over to the local bank with a subpoena and got bank records. It's not unusual for somebody to report some sort of fraud occurring on their account and their bank doesn't have a physical location. That detective has a certain level of knowledge and expertise in order to deal with what is really a new industry, a new frontier for us. Computer fraud. A week doesn't go by, I don't get something that comes across my desk. Why they send it to me personally, I don't know from the federal government. But auction fraud now is really big out there. Our detectives end up investigating that as well. The, you know, child pornography was something that was almost eradicated before we had the internet. And now, it has just blossomed. Bad word.
Yeah, it's a too pretty a picture to say that.
And our detectives are involved in investigating that. Does some of it fall outside the boundaries of the city of Portsmouth? Well, it does, but the same thing can be said for any other crime as well. Most criminals are mobile. Somebody that's committing a robbery or burglary in Portsmouth is committing a similar crime in Somersworth or in Massachusetts. So, they do a lot of prevention stuff as well. They do stuff in the schools by way of education for our kids. I, quite frankly, myself, don't even understand a lot of it, so it goes right over my head. Counsel Panalakis and I were talking about this last night.
Counsel Spears, my wife and I, three months ago, were scammed for $8,000 from our bank account from someone in the United Kingdom. Now, who do I report that to?
Right, I don't know how it works, so I was curious.
I started with my bank, but, you know, I don't know anybody in the United Kingdom.
Right. Thank you. Counsel Spear, anything further? Yeah, one more question.
Sure.
A little bit easier to answer. I was looking at some car magazines, and they mentioned that the Dodge Charger is now available for police officers, and they suggested that it might have lower or higher gas efficiency, fuel economy. And I was wondering if that is something the commission or department is looking at, just because gas prices are always going up and up and up.
I talked to one of the highway patrol officers. I was at Home Depot. We pulled in in the Charger. I said, boy, what a sharp-looking car. He said, it's too much car. He said, it is too powerful. The trunk is too small. It doesn't have the capacity of carrying all the equipment that a police officer needs. The gas tank is too small. He says, I'm always at the pump, filling up, and it's just too much car. And he said, I've gotten into trouble with the power that's there.
Didn't New Hampshire State Police have been experimenting with Chargers, and they're going back to Crown Vics? One of the things we have done, though, is we've, it used to be that we would roll our fleet over into the Unmark. So for a car, we bought a Crown Vic, and it was a black and white, at the point when it was pretty much at the end of its life as a patrol vehicle, we would paint it a different color and use it as an Unmark vehicle. We're now, through the help of the city manager and the council and the Rolling Stock Plan, we now use Ford Tauruses, which were much more fuel-efficient than the Crown Vics.
Yeah, we use the lifecycle costing. So at some point, you know, as you send these down, the cost of maintaining them just skyrockets. So, the chief is, they've been working on that, and I think it's worked out well.
It has worked out well.
Very good.
Thank you. Eric, anything further? Esther's next. Counsel Kennedy.
I just really want to thank you guys for taking the time. I know you've done it in the last 24 hours, to bring it in at 3.5 and trying to work towards our goal. So I know that it's a last-minute effort here, but I really appreciate the time you guys did that and doing that.
Thank you, Counsel. It was painful.
I'm sure it was.
Counselor Panalakis, we're getting towards 8:30. That does not mean that we cannot continue, but I just raised that issue. Counselor Panalakis.
Yes, first I'd like to use my council hat, and then I'd like to change to the rep hat.
Whatever hat you want to wear.
I'd just like to thank you for coming in for the, with the 3.5%. But I also, as a state representative and serve as a vice chair of criminal justice, think that the people in the city of Portsmouth need to know how well-educated their people are and how well they're trained. Last week, we did the internet bill, which is a very complicated thing, and I don't think if I lived to be 100, I'll ever understand it. But we had two police, I wouldn't, detectives, I guess it were, come before our committee, and they really enlightened us. And one of them is, just seemed to have the knowledge on the top level where he needed it, and he was able to convey that to committee members and tell them the things that they needed, such as defense lawyers wanted to remove the computers into their own places and things like that, things that in the future could be used. And I just found it enlightening, and I was very proud to be able to say I was fortunate. And I'd like to thank you for that.
And that, you know, one of the things they're teaching the officers in the academy now is when they go into any crime scene, one of the first things they should look for is a computer because there may very well be evidence on the computer. Just this week, just yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, we were investigating an untimely death. It was a suicide. And the detectives found the suicide note on the computer. If it wasn't for finding that, we would have spent lord knows how much time and effort investigating that case, so.
And I'd just like to follow up, that it was enlightening to know that we have five labs in the city, in the state, that take care of these computers. And I never realized how far they could go back or what they held. And the things that come on them, they couldn't even talk about in the committee meeting. It was so disgusting.
Assistant Mayor.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for the hard work and coming in at three and a half percent. But I also want to touch on, if you could elaborate a little bit. There was a question earlier about, we spend money on things like street sweeper, resource officers, and you measure it by a number of arrests. Is there also, in your opinion or in your expertise, when we fund things like street sweeper, resource officers and the like, knowing that we have those programs, is there, there must be some prevention involved? Like, people stay off our streets maybe, so that maybe there's some, just like there's unintended consequences when you remove something, there's maybe unforeseen benefits when you keep something in place. So therefore, sort of, you get what you pay for, so to speak. Could you give us a little bit, like, in other words, you can measure so many dollars we spend on a street sweeper, and you get this many arrests. But is there arrests that we don't have to make because we have those programs?
I mean, that's always the challenge in police work, is trying to quantify what does not happen out there. You know, and I think a good example of that is what we saw happen in the downtown area. I mean, at one point, you know, the downtown was very popular, but all of a sudden, one summer, it became very popular. I mean, it was a lot of young kids down there, and it reached a tipping point. And before we know it, we were getting complaints, especially from our senior citizens, because they were afraid. They were nervous going out into this public space where there were lots of kids hanging out. And we ended up deploying our school resource officers who were not in school in the summertime. We put them in Market Square, and that's exactly what we did. We put them in front of the church. They complained about being chained to the church, but we did. And sure enough, the complaints dropped right off the map by just having that presence there. It's why we shifted from the drug task force model, where we had a detective who was dedicated to other areas, other jurisdictions, to a level of crime that wasn't providing a benefit to the city of Portsmouth, to street-level enforcement. Because a lot of what we were seeing on a local level had to do with street-level addicts. And we wanted to focus on that. So there was a definite preventive.
You know, we're very proud of the fact that we haven't had an alcohol-related death in the city in eight years, isn't it, Chief?
Yes.
You could make the conclusion of, then, we don't need saturation patrols. It's not a problem. But is it the preventative action of the saturation patrols and the checkpoints that has meant we haven't had an alcohol-related death? And it's a double-edged sword, and measuring non-events is very difficult.
Follow up on that? Sure, please.
Yeah, I just, and I, that's been my experience, because having a downtown business, and it wasn't that many years ago, maybe 10 or so, that we had a policy because of safety that we escorted all of our employees, particularly female employees, to their car after they left work, anytime after 10 o'clock. We haven't done that in years. You know, it's been stated that we have a lot of police officers for our population. I think what's on, sometimes is unnoticed, is we have such a large working population and evening population of people that come to Portsmouth and stay here, notwithstanding the events, but just on a normal 18-hour basis, you might say. But it seems that with the increase in police coverage, that there's been a noticeable, see, I mean, I consider Portsmouth extremely safe, and I think that's where I'm getting at. There's a lot of money we're not spending that because of public safety, the increase. But we have this huge population, especially in the evening, you mentioned alcohol-related incidences. Very popular town. Not much happens, it seems.
Well, you may, thank you, Assistant Mayor. We are not a town of 21,000. Counsel Dwyer.
I think this is a very interesting area, and the one thing earlier that you presented, Chief, that I think is kind of chilling is the binge drinking, the third of the kids reporting binge drinking in the last month. That's not ever having, you know, that's in the last month. And, you know, we know that the predictors related to that kind of thing is really chilling. I think this would be a really interesting area to really develop some performance measures that are of a creative type. And, you know, I'm a researcher, and we call that the no-treatment expectation. And that's why you get paid in research, to figure out what is the no-treatment expectation, you know? So that there might be some ways to, because clearly, this is going to be an area of focus for us for a long time, for youth, for downtown, as our, you know, as our city grows with the additional establishments that are already, the planning board has already approved. So to be able to look at our performance related to alcohol across the spectrum, I think would be very important. And, you know, I had brought up last year at some point and received some feedback from you all on it, what Portland did with, you know, the Barstool Task Force and things like that. Just really trying to look at, what is this costing our city in real terms? And so, getting, preparing ourselves for looking at what the real cost of alcohol is to our city, I think would be, would be very enlightening. So it might be a very interesting area to try to experiment with some performance measures that don't cause a lot of record-keeping, but that are maybe some real, you know, telling things that we could look at. You know what Jack just mentioned, I think is really interesting, but, and that's an example of not needing escorts after a certain period of time.
Okay, Counselor Clayburg.
At our last PTA meeting at the high school, we talked about the drinking in, you know, high school and the youth risk behavior study. And, you know, we were trying to think of ways that we, as parents, could address the issue. And I'm just thinking of it as we're talking here, and it's a way that it wouldn't cost the police department anything. But what we talked about was maybe putting together a big task force of all the seacoast communities, and it would be a volunteer effort where parents, police, well, I guess maybe there would be, there might be some costs involved, but administrators, teachers, you know, anyone that comes in contact with young people would get together and try to address the, what can we do to try to encourage teenagers not to drink? Or, you know, what could you do to address this problem? So, you know, maybe that's something we could pursue at the high school level, is, you know, trying to get some kind of a task force together that includes even the private schools in our area. I mean, a real comprehensive group to try to combat the problem of underage drinking and parties and all that. So that could be something that we could pursue at the school level.
Thank you, Counsel Clayburg. Counselor Panalakis.
Just to follow up on that, 85% of the prisoners are in there because, in our prisons, because of alcohol and drug abuse addicts. And one thing that we lack in this state is rehabilitation centers. And that's something that needs to be done, but that's a big number.
Okay, bringing it back to the- Okay, bringing it back to the notable points all, getting back to the police budget. Did you have anything further? Does any counselor wish to ask any further questions? I will just say myself, thank you, Commissioners, Chief, Staff of the Police Department for coming up with that additional cut. That shows a lot of community spirit and the desire to try and everybody come together and get this budget done. And so, I join Counsel Kennedy, the Assistant Mayor, Counsel Panalakis, all of us. I think that takes a lot to do that and to come in here and do that, and we do appreciate it. We do not take it for granted. And we appreciate you being involved in the process. And when we have an opportunity to meet again, it might be for the last budget meeting, and we might have some additional questions. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the preliminary statistics on the middle-school drinking is even more frightening.